Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is October 2nd, 2024. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance by Councilmember Hayden.
Our faith was tested recently by another hurricane just two years after the worst disaster in our city's history. From southwest Florida through Tampa, Big Bend, Atlanta, the Carolinas, and Tennessee, over 160 people have died and lives remain filled with heartbreaking loss. This we know. Hope lies just around the corner. Faith will be restored and somehow, some way, in this community, this country, we pledge to persevere. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please go to the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmembers Carr.
Here.
Cosdine.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Steinke.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
All present.
Item five is changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? If not, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion to adopt.
Hold on, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to add an item to follow-up items from City Management, G2, which would be a Hurricane Helene update.
Okay.
Motion to adopt with the addition.
Second. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Cosdine.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item seven is approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion regarding the minutes from a special meeting of September 12th, 2024?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion regarding the minutes from the special meeting of September 18th, 2024?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion regarding the minutes of regular meeting of September 18th, 2024?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is citizens' input time, a maximum of 60 minutes except for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record and to identify us as a collective council and not as an individual. Anyone would like to speak? We use the podium, to my left, your right.
Hi, my name is Julia Tari and I have a question because I had to drive here like it was Pac-Man years ago because every road is flooded. And I'd just like to know, because I'm in your district, and I would like to know what's the cause of this. I've been living here since the 90s and I've just never seen this much flooding. It's like a lake on every road I tried to take to get here, from Chiquita to Burnt Store. So if somebody can answer that question, I'd really wonder what's going on with the drainage. Thank you.
Any other... Come on, ma'am.
My name is Maria Love and I'm here because I am very upset with the few of you up there. For one, you know who you are, that you had to holler at us because when the little kids were here, they didn't behave to your standards. I don't know why the kids were here after this was a council meeting. Also, to the person that said, senior citizen, don't need as much money or raise as everybody else, I don't know about that. Can you explain it to me? The cost of living is the same for me as everybody else. My taxes are the same for me as everybody else, as yours and everybody else. I don't get a break on anything in this town. So, I'd like an answer about that. And I don't understand where you want respect, but you don't respect the rest of us. So, you have to earn it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on citizens' input? Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Is any council discussion on citizens' input? Mr. City Manager, I know I've driven around all day today and I didn't see any roads flooded today myself. Do you have any knowledge of any roads that are still flooded today? I noticed a few days ago during the storm last week, there was some roads, but as of today, I was driving all throughout the city. I didn't...
No, the storm surge was gone by 5:30 in the morning. We had employees out 5:30 in the morning, Friday morning. I'm assuming this might be from a rain event. It is possible that when we get certain intensities, that the system is overloaded. Like I said before, with Hurricane Ian, that inundated our entire city with six feet to eight feet of water, by 7:00 AM the next day, the entire city had drained. As we just saw with Hurricane Helene, storm surge came in, continued to come in till 1:30. We had about 5.7 feet of storm surge. By 5:30 the next day, all the streets drained. The streets are meant to drain when they are completely flooded from doorstep to doorstep at a certain rate. If we have rain events that exceed the amount of drainage that the pipes can handle, you will get isolated flooding, and that will happen in any city in the nation. Storm systems are only designed to handle a certain amount of pumps, a certain amount of capacity passively, and if you want to exceed that, you have to have, add pumps to help get that out of there. There are very few cities, New Orleans being one of them, that does that. Otherwise, we're designed to handle just about every storm that can come our way, including storm surge and be drained. I'm assuming by the time the resident goes home, those same streets will be drained.
Thank you. Seeing no other discussion, we'll move on to item 9A, is the consent agenda. Open up the consent agenda for council to pull any items for discussion. If there's no items to be pulled, I'll entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing done, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Cosdine.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item 9B is appointments to boards. We don't have anything listed tonight. 9C is unfinished business. C1 is follow-up items for council. There's none listed. Council have any follow-up items? Seeing none, move on to 9D is new business, none listed. 9E is personnel actions, there's none listed. Petitions to council, none. 9G is follow-up items from city management. G1 is FEMA NFIP update. Mr., let's see, Chief Lamb, there in the back.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ryan Lamb, Emergency Management Resilience Director. The conversation we had with FEMA this week, as we've been working through this issue, we've presented them our plan, and I'm going to go into that here in a little bit about what we've been doing here from Hurricane Helene. They've been pleased with that, and they've also reviewed our plan in draft so far. They haven't given us any official results, but so far, they haven't had any comments back on the NFIP corrective action plan. That being said, we've also reviewed the plan and based off the current workload that we're seeing with Hurricane Helene, we are confident we'll continue to meet the benchmarks that are set forth in that corrective action plan. So, we're not planning to ask for any extensions. Our plan is to be full steam ahead on our corrective action plan in addition to our response and recovery from Hurricane Helene.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Lamb? Okay, thank you, sir. G2 was the add-on item requested by the City Manager. That's update on Hurricane Helene, and I'll turn it over to the City Manager to start with.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just an update to the City Council and the residents. Most of the issues that we encountered were after many people went to sleep with the storm surge and the flooding that came in. We did have some issues to address during the day. What I wanted to make sure that you all had an update on what we experienced and then what happened throughout, the response and preparation. Thank you.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Ryan Lamb, Emergency Management Resilience Director. So, talking about Hurricane Helene and the city's posture and response and preparation to that storm. So, just a general conversation, and we're continuously watching the tropics. This is all the track storms for Hurricane Helene that we continuously watch on a daily basis to see if anything develops. Now, it's important as we look at these things that we balance out a couple of key factors. Preparedness is always our number one goal, right? Especially as it goes against life safety and property conservation and protecting our environment are all things that are very important to us, that has to be for, it is first and foremost in our preparation. We know there's always constant track changes, right? As these things wobble, we see some of those things, those forecast tracks changes, and that also means the impacts change based on those areas. Intensity modeling, as things go, sometimes, like the current storm that's down there looking, they're showing a lower threshold for intensity modeling today that can change tomorrow, it changed last night. So, we continue to watch and monitor those things. And then timing is also important. The speed in which a storm approaches our area is important as it affects tides, other things, our response, when we need to have certain crews and resources and put in different places at times. And then, of course, another thing that I get concerned about is something called messaging fatigue. So, we saw this after Hurricane Irma, right? Everybody was asked to evacuate, everybody evacuated, and then nothing happened, right? Because the storm hit south of us, we didn't get that big impact. And so, then everybody said, you know, hey, there was this big hullabaloo about nothing in their minds, and I'm never leaving again. And then we get, you know, the boy that cried wolf, and then you get bit by the wolf, and then, you know, people say, I'm never going to stay again. So, just trying to message out, want to make sure that we present a message that is be prepared, not panicked, and making sure we make the right times, the right calls at the right times. So, we continuously are working through this cycle of prevention, mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery, all of this effort of being resilient, working with Lee County, the state of Florida, and of course, the federal government. And we're, you know, in different phases right now based on the different incidents that we're currently experiencing. I also want to show that these are the most recent storms here as they've approached Florida. A lot of them have a similar track, but very different impacts to our area. As we look at Hurricane Adalia versus, you know, Debbie that we just experienced, then Hurricane Helene, which is further off the coast, but a more intense storm, we saw very different impacts as that compares between the two. So, starting on Monday, when the Hurricane Center started tracking the storm, Hurricane Helene much more closely, this is what we were looking at, right? So, we were outside of the 34 knot winds, but beginning to see an approach towards our area sometime in that Thursday evening time period. So, on Monday, based off of that information, we started community messaging of being prepared, not panicked. The state of Florida declared a state of emergency for potential tropical cyclone number nine. It wasn't even developed to a named storm at that point in time. And we went to an EOC level three, which is enhanced monitoring here for the city, where we start really reviewing this and beginning to consider some emergency actions. So, on Tuesday, this is the forecast change as it presented from the National Weather Service. At this point in time, we get into a daily battle rhythm in the EOC where we have a call twice a day with the National Weather Service, the Florida Department of Emergency Management twice a day, and Lee County and the municipal partners for Lee County calls once a day as well. We had a, another, we started creating our flash reports and sent messaging to staff to start considering some additional emergency preparatory actions like dropping the weers, pulling grates, preparing our facilities, fueling up vehicles and generators, staffing considerations, if we were going to get into Thursday, Friday response, the consideration of how the forecast would potentially impact city operations. Of course, we want to continue to message to our community, and based at that time, we were looking at it at an impact to our area somewhere around 0400 to 1600 hours on the 26th. As we move into what we saw Wednesday morning, again, we saw a slight wobble here in the track again. We continue to have our calls and briefings. We're allowed a level three activation still. We push out flash report number four. I have a conference call. I individually talked with every, I spoke with every director here across the city to make sure they were prepared and if they had any questions. Following the Lee County meeting, a call at 1 o'clock, we had a unified command meeting. And at that meeting, we made a decision to close city operations for nonessential services for Thursday based off of the forecasting that we were seeing for the next day. Again, we'd make the best decisions with the information we have at the time. We continued our public messaging, and at that point in time, we were anticipating a 0800 to 1600 impact the following day. It would be when our intensity area would be in our backyard. And again, based off of that, we were told everybody we're going to a level two activation effective 0700 the next morning. So, everybody was told, come in, plan to be here from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM essentially, at least. So, Thursday morning, we see much more development in the storm and some of those potential winds starting to pick up. Again, we have our briefings and calls. We're at a level two, so we're fully staffed in the EOC. We're one shift only there, but every seat is filled. We come out with rather flash report number three. So, this is what we see is kind of our last report before things come in. So, we look at a sustained wind forecast at 30 to 45 sustained miles an hour with a peak around 1600 hours. We're anticipated to have three to six inches of rain, a surge from three to five feet. The tornado threat was, what the National Weather Service considers was slight, and that was from 0800 to 1900 hours. So, based off of that, what did we actually see? So, the city monitors six weather stations that we own and operate across the city. At the EOC, we monitored the highest wind, so we had 28 miles an hour sustained with the 58 mile an hour gust at 1700 hours was that peak. We saw relatively low amount of rain, only 1.74 inches, and I think that was primarily because it was about 20 miles off the coast where the primary rains started, and the further outer bands were heading actually the east coast as it was coming up until it came past us late in the evening. For surge, we ended up seeing just over the estimation, we saw 5.5 feet at the high side of their estimation. We even exceeded that in the southeast and in the northwest, we measured about 4.7 feet of surge. Tornado, while there's none official, tornado has to be declared by a meteorologist, we did have one suspected, or at least a high wind event that touched down in the southeast. So, some of the impacts here, we had crews and folks out all night looking and observing. We had, you see J.C. Park there with water coming across the road that goes next to the water, some of the areas there in old Burnt Store. If it plays. So, this is the weir, and this is the saltwater.
Saltwater flowing into the Cape Coral freshwater systems.
As the City Manager said. So, that is the saltwater system, normally where the freshwater goes over, but you can see that the weir gates are dropped so that we could allow as much water out with the anticipation of seeing some significant rains. That didn't happen, but we lowered the weers to allow that additional capacity. But actually, in this case, we end up taking saltwater, and I think maybe, and hopefully that saves somebody from some flooding if we relieve some of that pressure in that fashion. Also, down at the Cape Coral Yacht Club, we were seeing, again, this is about 2 or 3 o'clock in the afternoon, already starting to see some of that surge coming. In advance of the storm, our survey and environmental teams went out and planted a number of stakes so that they could see where the surge, max surge went. You can see Dr. Robert there taking a high watermark down at the yacht club so we could monitor and measure where we're seeing some of any of those problem areas and things that we can document to help us into the future. We also flew the surveyor's drone over a number of places, so you can see the vegetation lines at the back of that property or the front of the other property there, so we can start looking to see, again, if we have any problem areas or potential flood inundation to any of the structures. So, response overnight, we had Public Works, police, fire, utility crews working. The fire department used their high water rescue vehicle, our brush truck, that could come out and help a number of disabled motorists on Cape Coral Parkway. But especially in that south, far southeast area around the yacht club, we know there was quite a bit of water that came in. We're doing the best to mark the intersections to keep people out. Again, we were fortunate that the majority of this really high surge happened while most people were in bed that night. So, waking up the next day, we start a number of things, and I apologize if this PowerPoint's a little thrown together. We've been busy and this was just trying to get you the information here. So, we've coordinated with our solid waste manager and looking at the amount of debris that we had. We've seen, of course, an uptick in horticulture debris, but monitoring that and Waste Pro is able to handle that, and then we're coordinating with anybody that potentially had interior flooding to coordinate any of the construction debris. Stormwater, of course, went back out and began immediately inspecting their infrastructure to make sure that there was no sustained damage or everything was functioning as it needed to be. You can see Public Works Street Sweeper out fixing water main breaks. We had an issue down at the boathouse where the propane cylinder, the night prior, myself and City Manager and the fire department came out and tried to pull some debris off of that propane cylinder, but the next morning, it was leaking and that had to be mitigated by the hazmat team. The city has applied for assistance, for public assistance through FEMA. Lee County, I believe, just today was approved for category A and category B, which is debris and those emergency protective measures. One of the big things that we did was based off of the lessons learned from Hurricane Ian and the NFIP process, we put together our impact surveys. So, impact surveys on Friday morning, we assembled 18 residential teams and six commercial teams. They went out between Friday and Saturday, and we completed over 11,381 impact surveys. And you can see, that's a map in the upper right-hand corner of our system called Crisis Track where particular inspectors are given a particular zone that they're to go up and down, and we can see which streets they've hit, which ones have been missed, so we can ensure that we get 100% compliance. Based on that, we had 150 properties that were affected, 74 minors and three majors, and zero destroyed. So, this, I believe we have a relatively limited number of individuals that had interior flooding, but there's still, we know there was a few that were in that category. And then, based off of that, on Monday, we were able to go out and help Lee County with some of their impact surveys to help our neighbors. We are still very much in the process of going back out now and sending a building inspector and team out to each of these associated properties that were majors, minors, and affecteds to see if there was anything that needs to be done for floodplain management, for redeveloping that property. Again, this is just another shot of the crews out doing those impact surveys. We had a code officer and a building inspector looking for high watermarks, other things. We had our fire inspectors in the far right doing all of our commercial properties that were in that downtown area. Based off of this, we've had a number of deployments through the state of Florida. We've had four personnel deploy with Florida Task Force Team Six or with our Urban Search and Rescue. They were initially sent to Charlotte County, then they were deployed to CSD Key. They came back yesterday. We currently have one battalion chief and four personnel and an engine in Cedar Key right now as part of Strike Team 1301. We're talking with the Police Department about a possible deployment for additional eight officers for an affected community, and we've had active conversations with the state of Florida about possible deployment of floodplain management staff to help other communities that were particularly impacted and inundated with floodwaters to be able to take, again, some of, all the lessons learned and apply that to help our neighbors in need. It's been a positive if there was anything there, that we've now become subject matter experts in that field. Communications, we've pushed out, you see 22 Facebook posts, 18 Instagram posts, 16 posts on X, and I didn't do a count, but a number of media advisories and press releases and press conferences in response to Hurricane Helene. I want to highlight also that while we're working on all these things, as we talk about that stormwater that comes up, it comes up sometimes through those storm grates and drains that are meant to take out the rainwater. We are fortunate that we didn't have a lot of rain because that would have added inches onto that five feet that we experienced. But we, it's really hard to stop the ocean as it comes up through the canal systems and those storm grates. But we are doing a number of things here as it relates to flood mitigation for our city, whether that be our vulnerability assessment, the potential of adding some elements to add storm capacity to a section of the old golf course. We've been awarded disaster resilience grants for three weers, the North Cape Coral Drainage Basin Restoration Project, the Cape Coral Parkway Corridor Study. We've three active, or sorry, two active requests into Florida DEP for resilience, for evacuation routes, additional weers. We have nine active grants in for HMGP to a total of $69 million, and we're also actively working on a watershed management plan, and we have numerous stormwater projects always in process to try and improve our stance for draining post-stormwater event. That is, I'll stand by if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of takeaways from this storm as there are, you know, from others. Historically, we've always had a 45 miles an hour to 50 mile an hour winds would be where we would declare a state of emergency with the point where we're getting in a position where we have to shut down emergency services. We've never really had a good gauge on the level of storm surge, on what the forecast, what forecast would trigger us to enact a state of emergency, local state of emergency. I'm fairly confident now, having gotten 5.5 to 5.7 feet of storm surge and having four homes impacted, but 140 that were within inches of being flooded, that six foot is our number. If we are ever in a storm and expecting six foot or more of surge regardless of the winds, we should be enacting a state of local emergency due to the flood aspect. So, I think that's definitely a lesson learned from this storm, as well as being asked now to deploy some resources from the general employee population to other areas to assist them with, ironically, an area where FEMA is looking at us and trying to see what we could have done after Ian better, they're already contacting us and saying, we need your help. We've seen what you can do, we saw your plan, come help us in other areas of the county. We've never been in a position to do that, and so our labor contracts don't address what do we do and how do we pay our employees that get deployed outside of public safety? And so, there's some things for us to consider there. With all storms, we'll do a debrief, but it was important to at least let you all know what we experienced because a lot of it happened after it got dark and well after the timeframe that was expected for impacts, which was around 1900. the timeframe that was expected for impacts, which was around 1900 to 1800. We saw impacts that were increasing all the way through 1:00 AM Friday morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you. First, I wanted to thank you for the updates that you provided to me through, there's only so many people that are going to be at the DEOC, but certainly concerned and interested. So I appreciate the communications made to those of us that couldn't be at the EOC. And Ryan, just a quick question. As those assessments, I saw the, on the one piece of your PowerPoint, there was the teams that went out to evaluate, it's all in the, in the southern end. Was anything done upriver as it might have affected around Rosen Park and around Horton Park, up around the midpoint area? Any of that evaluation done up that way?
So, sorry, it's cut off in the photo. We went all the way up to the midpoint, basically did the midpoint south and east of Del Prado, then south of Cape Coral Parkway. We also did drive-throughs through the northwest and other parts of the city. But based off of that, we didn't see anything that was close to getting into properties. And so that's where we focused our resources, based off of kind of those scouting reports. Then we kind of focused in. And then it's kind of narrowing that further down now that we've done all of these 11,000. Now we're going to focus down on these 250 or so for further evaluation to make sure that they have any resources that they need, that they're getting, you know, individual assistance has been approved for our area. And then also to remind them of the proper process for...
And so it narrowed the canal and it made the canal shallower so that that surge that came in had lesser area to fill. And so you may, you may find in that area around there that the, that the levels of the surge there actually were as high as they were in Ian because there wasn't as much room for the water to come in based on, if you will, washout that we experienced from Ian.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll keep that in mind.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, I just want the city manager and his staff and all the city employees to know that first thing in the morning after the hurricane had passed, I drove around and I was very impressed. I mean, it seemed like everywhere I drove, there was city employees checking infrastructure from pump stations to bridges to cleaning up the streets. And I want all the city staff and employees to know that I got many phone calls from citizens that were very impressed with how fast the response time was into getting out there first thing in the morning and cleaning up our city and checking our infrastructure and make sure everything was safe for our citizens to continue their life after that storm had passed. So I just want to say thank you.
Councilmember Carr.
Thank you. I like go the thanks also. You did a great job, Mike. Appreciate all the hard work by everybody. Just a quick question on the storm surge comment you made related to the six-foot mark. I think this one was, would you, so would this one have fallen under your new criteria, given the forecast? I think the forecast was five to seven, right, for our area?
Three to, three to five.
Three to five, okay.
It was three to five and, and our wind had, we weren't over the 50. We were at that, like, we had one gust at 58. And so the decision was to not enact a local state of emergency. But now, having the actual high-water marks and the assessments and knowing how close we were to having a totally different picture, literally within a half a foot, if we have a six-foot or a greater prediction, certainly would be a very strong recommendation to, to get into a higher level of readiness.
Understood. And the benefits for the local state of emergency are what exactly?
So when we enacted the local state of emergency, it allows, it's not a all or nothing, it's an à la carte menu that becomes the choice of the city manager to enact. So we can enact a curfew, ban the sale of alcohol, access on a private property to remove debris. There's a variety of things that that local state of emergency does, that does come at the cost of double time for employees that work during that period.
Thank you. Yeah, I also wanted to thank Mr. City Manager and all your staff. I know you guys were out late into the night driving around the city assessing what the damage was, how it was going to impact our community. So thank, thank you, all of our EOC staff for everything that you did up to the storm and all the recovery efforts thereafter. So thank you.
Just one more thing, if I may add. You know, this was certainly an odd storm that we've, we've never experienced before. So we're going to continue to watch that. But I do want to just mention that we did have six employees across the city that were personally impacted, that had severe flooding in their properties, that live outside the area, Pine Island, Charlotte County. So we're offering them there as much assistance as we can as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item 10A is public hearings, quasi-judicial hearings. We do not have any listed tonight. So we'll go on to item 10B legislative public hearings, first of which is Ordinance 63-24. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 63-24, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida approving and granting to South Florida Water Management District, an amendment of conservation easement upon property owned by the city located in Section 4, Township 45 South, Range 23, East Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein, and known as Joe Covielo Park, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute the amendment of conservation easement. A copy of the amendment of conservation easement is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference, providing for severability and an effective date.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Ms. Andrews, it looks like.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Dawn Andrews with the Real Estate Division. Ordinance 63-24 grants an amendment to the conservation easement to the South Florida Water Management District upon a portion of the Joe Covielo Park adopted under Ordinance 102-21 in January 2022. The request is to amend the conservation easement boundary to exclude the sewer and utility line area originally depicted in the approved plans that were part of the permit and to replace that area with an area of equal size within the park's area. Your attachments had the legal description and sketches of the replacement area. And I can stand by for any questions. I believe we have other staff members here too, if you have other questions about the conservation easement itself.
Thank you. I'll now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 63-24, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion regarding Ordinance 63-24?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to Ordinance 66-24. Madam City Clerk, please read the title and set the second and final public hearing date.
Ordinance 66-24, an ordinance of the mayor and city council amending the city of Cape Coral, Florida Land Development Code, Article 4, zoning districts. Chapter 1, General Provisions, Section 4.1.6, uses by zoning district, use hierarchy, Table 4.1.6, use table regarding the car wash use. Amending Article 5 Development Standards, Chapter 11, conditional uses by creating Section 5.11.17, car wash facilities, establishing conditions for car wash facilities. Amending Article 11, Definitions, Section 11.2, definitions regarding car wash facilities, providing for severability and an effective date. The second and final public hearing will be October 16, 2024.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. For the record, Anthony Santora, Senior Planner, Cape Coral Services. I'm here to talk about Ordinance 66-24. This is the car wash facilities ordinance. Just a little bit of context, this is a resultant of Ordinance 16-24, which was the moratorium for car wash facilities. Within that moratorium ordinance, there was several concerns that were brought up about the facilities, their proliferation and some of the issues that the, was, came about, associated with them. So this was passed at a public hearing on 4/17 and expires on 1/17. And as part of that ordinance, the city was tasked with looking at possible land development code changes to see if they could impact or mitigate some of those issues that were brought forward. So this also was heard at a committee of the whole meeting on 7/31. So in that meeting, staff had highlighted some key factors and elements with the use, some typical site construction requirement, requirement elements, and then presented several case studies of similar municipalities and jurisdictions which undertook code of ordinance changes to alleviate some of the similar concerns that were had. And then we presented three possible options with some direction given by city council. So that brings us to the revisions that you'll see before you. What they achieve is A, clearly defining what a car wash facility is, B, making them conditional uses in specific districts, and then C, creating new conditional use requirements associated with the use itself. So the affected sections are LDC, Section 11.2, our definition section, Table 4.1.6, our use table, and then 5/11/17 was created as the conditional use requirements associated with the new conditional use. So we're just going to briefly cap some of the revisions. So starting with Section 11.2, a newly defined definition of what a car wash facility is. The new definition solidifies the use interpretation and removes current ambiguity. We did not have car wash facilities defined in our code, so this helps alleviate some of that. The definition does cover both standalone structures as well as integrated structures, and it also covers auto facilities as well as self-service facilities. Just highlight the use table revisions. Again, car wash facilities were permitted by right in commercial and commercial corridor. Now they will be conditional use, excuse me, in commercial and commercial corridors. So not changing the district, just changing the use from permitted to conditional use. And then just a highlight of 5/11/17, this is the newly created section. You can see there is a bevy of subsections. We're just going to go over the high points of that. One, applicability. This section is now covering all car wash facilities as defined by 11.2, with the exception of three of them. One, access, facilities that are accessory to primary uses or which occupy no more than 20% of the overall site and are fully integrated, those are exempt, as well as accessories to primary use classified as light vehicle sales on five acres, those are also exempt. And then temporary outdoor facilities associated with nonprofits, religious functions or governmental organizations, those are exempt so long as they are temporary. Then locational requirements. So this was one of the ones that we had brought up to ensure that the dense proliferation of the use was spread out through the city. So we are looking at a minimum separation distance of one mile between uses. The facilities will only be permitted on parcels which have primary frontage on any of our major roadways, starting from minor collectors all the way through arterials. And then they must be located at least 500 feet away from any intersection of those collector or arterial roadways. So here you can just kind of see a brief diagram of the location requirements. So here you can see two frontage roadways with a minimum separation distance from the center point of the center lines of those right-of-ways extending out 500 feet. And that just gives you an idea of where we're looking to try and preserve the most amount of commercial and professional retail properties. So then moving on to 5/11/17 for enclosures, just specifying that everything is to be enclosed within a building, including any of the vacuum systems. We did permit that centrally designed vacuum systems are allowed to be exterior of that, but all these systems, like the vacuum pumps and any of the generators, those are required to be within them. And then residential adjacency, just making sure that they are required when abutting a residential use of district to have specific buffering and landscaping associated with that. And then additionally, some screening requirements, making sure that if they are up against residential areas, they are being screened. And then just a couple of other ones that were highlighted, you know, no outdoor storage display, limiting of noise and prohibiting of exterior detailing.
Thank you. I'll now open up the first public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 66-24, please come forward. Use the podium to my right, your left. I'm sorry, my left, your right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Joe Mazurk was President BJM Consulting here on behalf of numerous property owners in commerce, that own commercial properties. I have no grand, grandiose idea that I'm going to change any minds up here, but it is my duty to tell you the same thing I've told you the last time you've tried to do this before. I really do appreciate and agree with staff's recommendations. I think they did a good, good, good job with bringing back for conditional uses. I think the, the distance separation of one mile, you're picking winners and losers. And you know, specifically based on appraisals of Skyline Park Lot, when you sold it to the Rehns, you take uses off, the value goes down. So you're knowingly taking property rights if you do that. 500 foot from, from intersection, same thing. Don't try to drive the market. It fails every time you do it. Interesting that you want to require 75% of the frontage on your major arterials. I thought you didn't want these on your major arterials. Additional screening next to residential landscape screening. If you don't annually inspect it or some period of time inspect it, it doesn't work. Look at every convenience store in the city. It dies. We used to have annual inspection, then we gave it up. Talk about, you know, you know, car washes are not permanent uses sometimes. The first full-service automated car wash is now the Cove downtown Cape Coral, on Cape Coral Parkway. These are not permanent uses. Just like, you know, we used to have an asphalt plant on Cleveland Avenue, north of College Parkway. It isn't there anymore. The market fixes those problems. The tree and shrub, shrub count, we have administrative deviations already for tree and shrub counts. We can't physically locate all the trees that are required on larger sites. Smaller sites, fine. Larger sites, you can't physically put in 400 trees on a Cape Coral site. You'd be building forests instead of buildings. And this is more, this is over and above. And you need, you have to be, you have to do something that's not going to be administrative nightmare for you to go forward. The conditional use, I'll go with. It's good. Fix your conditional uses so they're administratively doable and eliminate the restrictions for distance and adjacence to intersections because you are then picking winners and losers of property rights adjacent to each other. One outside the 500 foot, one inside the 500 foot, two different prices of value of the property. You can't do it. And, you know, we never got sued for taking away property rights in the city of Cape Coral because we're dealing with small individual mom and pops. You're not dealing with that anymore, people. International investors in Cape Coral, they have law departments larger than yours and they will sue you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Just a reminder that the second and final public hearing on the Ordinance 66-24 is set for August 16, 2024. Okay, we'll move on to Ordinance 67-24. I'm sorry, Councilmember Welsh, I see you're late on, I apologize.
Thank you. I just wanted to, to take care of this now instead of in my reports. But both of these came forward today at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they both were denied by planning and zoning. So I know we'll get all that information before our next and final hearing. I just wanted everyone to be prepared. They went back and forth and talked about different ideas on how to make this work for the city, but ultimately it came to a denial of both of these with that commission. Thank you.
Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Are comments appropriate at this time or do we need to wait for the conversation at the next meeting? I just had a couple of questions.
I think you can do it now and at the next meeting.
I've got a couple of questions. Couple of, two of them are related to the distance calculations. The 500 feet, based on the diagram, is it to the property line or is it to the, to the structure on that property?
It would be calculated to the property line as it reads in the proposed ordinance.
Okay, because that, I mean, unless the depiction seems to go into the property itself, not the property...
It does. So where, where it goes within the property line, that property would not be considered allowable for construction. So if we were looking at the diagram, what you would see is the property just to the east of the blue line, the larger property, that would be what, like this one right here where you see the cursor, you'd see how it is just outside of the 500 foot. That would be a property with the appropriate amount of frontage that could be developed as a car wash. It sits without that.
So if the property were contiguous to the, to the prop, to the roadway inside that 500 feet, you couldn't use that parcel regardless of where you place the structure?
Correct. It would have to have a minimum frontage along the arterial or collectors.
Okay. The other question with regard to the one mile, is the one mile measurement by the travel distance? distance or as the crow flies?
Straight line.
The other question I've got was regard to buffering. We talk about residential adjacent to residential. We have a six-foot berm, right? Plus the landscape, is the way I read it?
Correct.
Okay. Or a wall, they have an option.
Or an eight-foot wall.
The other, what's not addressed, at least not that I saw, was adjacent to canal frontage.
So that is in there as, let's see here. So if you look under subsection D, there is a portion of it in which if there is a canal or right-of-way separating the two property lines, so if you have a canal with residential on one side of it and a commercial car wash facility on the other side, that still requires them to put in the buffer, buffering that canal so that the residential uses across the canal are shielded from potential adverse impacts from that use.
Do the setbacks from the waterway apply?
When you say setback?
For instance, the 20-foot visibility criteria that we have on canal frontage today, waterfrontage.
So you're talking about the setback from the?
Yeah, in other words, can you put plantings, buffering plantings within the 20-foot?
You should be able to, yes.
Well, isn't that contradictory to our current code?
I don't believe it is at that location.
Maybe we can maybe look at that legally then. But I'm pretty sure that you can't put obstructive views within the 20 feet of a waterway.
I thought it was proud and outside on the water.
Pardon? Say that again.
The impacts, visual impacts that you're referencing are out beyond the waterway and out into the water.
I think it's the adjacent property owners have visibility rights within our current code.
Correct, and I believe that is out into the canal way.
Okay. That's just a question. We can, I'm just questioning it, that's all. The other piece would be is if they wanted to, and the type of canal frontage, I think, is also, maybe we want to get into the detail more. In other words, the end of a canal versus along a canal, you know, similar to what we do with our marine improvements, there's different criteria and definitions for what you can and can't do based on the location of a canal. I know it's splitting hairs, but we've got, you know, we've got one that we're dealing with today that we're, you know, it's interesting when you look at the buffering piece, adjacent to the residential is not along the canal frontage because it's an end of a canal. I just want to make sure we're covering it with the language within the code that we're bringing forward to address unusual sites that we may not anticipate in the future.
So if I'm following what you're saying, a car wash that is at the end of a canal going block to block, you were asking that there would be a 20-foot buffer along the adjacent residentials on either side of the canal, but immediately at the terminus of the waterway, there would be no buffer? Are you making, you're trying to make sure the language covers the buffer?
Right.
Whether it's abutting canal right-of-way in a residential area or real property that's residential?
Exactly.
Okay. We will make sure that language is to address.
All right. I think that's it. Just give me one second. And if we do approve and enact this at the next hearing, does the moratorium immediately cease at that time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Steenke.
Thank you. I believe that an illustration of the issue with the blockage, if you will, on the canal is it relates to fences that run between properties, that they can only be three feet high opaque, and then above that, there's got to be 75% translucency, so transparency. I think that's where we're ending up here, is that if you've got to supply that buffer, if you will, according to current code, that buffer can only be three feet high without being able to see through it, and the whole idea is not to be able to see through it.
So that is true. We do have that requirement for fences. However, the wall and berm as required by our screening section in our landscape code are required to be set at the back of the buffer area. That means all the vegetation and area must be in front of that when buffering against residential uses.
So if you were a neighbor, a neighboring property, and that buffer was put in place to meet the requirement for across the canal, couldn't that buffer then block your view if you were a neighbor?
So if you were a neighbor directly adjacent to the side of, let's just take a, for instance, you are aside to the property, and what you would have was you would have a 20-foot space, and within that space you would have a certain amount of plantings, and then at the end of that 20 feet, you would have either six-foot bermed earth wall or an eight-foot masonry wall. So you would still have 20 feet between the property line and where the wall is because all of that space is required to be present on the residential side of the wall, so you are not enclosing the property in a wall and then putting all the required landscaping on the inside. That's not what the code is designed.
Right, that's my point. So the wall is 20 feet up?
Is 20 feet off of the property line.
But the property line is the canal.
In most instances, it is along the edge of the canal.
Right, so you're 20 feet up from that, but then you put your landscaping in front of the wall?
Correct.
So now that is blocking that view that the neighbor has.
Well, currently, we do allow landscaping along in those locations.
So to Councilmember Carr's point, so that would conflict with the way it currently exists?
I don't believe so. I'm having a hard time following because we do allow landscaping to be placed within those areas. This is just requiring that they put that landscaping in there and that they also provide when abutting residential districts a specific type of element to help visually block out the use. So there is not specifically, we're not asking them to, at the property line, put a wall or put a hedge or put something that would immediately impact views from adjacent neighbors. We are asking them to put in landscaping at a certain modicum within the buffered area and then at the very edge of that buffer area, like we do with all of the commercial buffering spaces, that they construct some type of visual deterrent such as the bermed wall or the masonry wall.
Maybe between now and the next, the second reading, maybe we can do some diagramming just so we, and some illustration, just so we understand what we're talking about since there obviously is a miscommunication somehow, some way.
Right.
Picture will be worth a thousand words.
Yes.
All right, thank you. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other discussion, we'll move on to ordinance 67-24. Madam City Clerk, please read titles at the second and final public hearing date.
Ordinance 67-24, an ordinance of the mayor and city council amending the city of Cape Coral, Florida land development code, Article 4, zoning districts, Chapter 1, general provisions, Section 4.1.6, uses by zoning district, use hierarchy, Table 4.1.6, use table, regarding the self-storage facilities use, amending Article 5, development standards, Chapter 10, specific use regulations, P asterisk, uses in Table 4.4, by eliminating Section 5.10.16, self-service storage facility in its entirety, amending Article 5, development standards, Chapter 11, conditional uses by creating Section 5.11.18, self-service storage facility, establishing conditions for self-service storage facilities, providing perseverance ability and an effective date. The second and final public hearing will be October 16, 2024.
Okay, we'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor. City Council, for the record, Anthony Santora, Senior Planner, Cape Coral Development Services. Again, here to talk about ordinance 67-24, self-storage facilities, pretty much the same format as the previous presentation, so I'm not going to belabor a whole lot of time in these couple slides. Again, this is the result of the moratorium for self-storage facilities, ordinance 15-24. This was also heard at the council meeting on 7/31. Similar approach taken as a car wash facilities. We examined specific items presented at the council along with several case studies and then gave possible solutions and then got direction from council. So the result of this is we are looking at making these facilities now conditional uses in specific districts. We are removing the specific use regulations out of the land development code and creating new conditional use requirements within the code. The affected sections is heard was Table 4.1.6, our use table, Section 51016 that has been removed, and Section 51118 that has been added. So just a little bit on the use table. Currently, the uses is permitted with standards in three districts, our commercial, industrial, commercial corridor. We are maintaining those districts, however, just making them conditional use. 51016, like I specified before, we are removing, we're reserving that section, and we are creating a new section that is specific to conditional uses. So within 51118, there are again several subsections, and we'll just cover them briefly. The first one being the limitations on the amount citywide that can be had. This is to help limit the proliferation of the facilities, and we based it off of a square footage per capital allotment. So we are looking to limit them to a maximum of 10 square feet per resident, 10 square feet being the upper end of the state of Florida's amount, which was generally between five and 10, so we went with that upper end. So current, our current allowance based off of population would be 2.13 million square feet. Our estimated existing square footage, this is both built and pending, is at 310. At maximum build-out, we would be looking at roughly 3.75 million square feet. So there is some room to grow, but currently we are over that allotment. So this population data must come from Bieber, and it is determined and posted by the city of Cape Coral annually, and the use of private estimates is prohibited. So the estimates and numbers will come from the city. The city will also track the amount of storage that is both permitted and proposed and publish that number annually so that people can have a clear idea of how much we have and how much is allowed. Similar locational requirements to the car wash facilities, we are looking for separation distance of one mile. Again, only permitting these on parcels which have primary frontage on major roadways, starting from our collectors all the way up to arterials, and then making sure that they are located at least 500 feet away from major intersections to help preserve that prime commercial space. Again, just similar map there. We are requiring that all facilities are within an enclosed building, so no open-air storage facilities will be permitted in other than industrial zoning districts. This extends to all uses and equipment, which is ancillary and accessory to the facility, and they must, all the storage areas and units must only be accessible from the interior of the building. Again, this is just for properties that are outside of the industrial zoning district. So we did have a mixed-use inclusion, and this is where any facility is designed as part of a integrated mixed-use facility, they are allowed to be implemented without those limitation factors in subsection A. They can do so only if they meet this certain criteria, and that is that a permissible non-residential use occupying at least 85% of the ground floor area is provided. And that is to understand that there is some accessibility, some service area, some equipment that may be necessary for accessing upper floors for the facility, and those need to be provided for. Also, that the permissible non-residential uses must predominantly front directly along and towards adjacent right-of-ways, that the residential, non-residential uses are wholly distinct from and not related to or an accessory of the storage facility, and that no storage unit or area may occupy the ground level. A couple of building and site aesthetics, making sure that the building is designed to look like a multi-story building. All facades along the public right-of-way have to have a minimum 40% glazing, light spillage requirements, and then that parking and loading stalls be oriented away from it. Additionally, we have a port over from our current standards requiring a minimum of 20-feet buffering strip with perimeter landscaping, where this is abutting a residential site or use, it is extended to 30 feet with the wall and berm provided. Just some other section recaps, we do prohibit outdoor storage and display, and then specifying that hours of access be limited when adjacent to residential uses.
Thank you. I now open up the first public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 67-24, please come forward.
Yeah. Joe Mazurk was president of BGM Consulting here on behalf of numerous property owners throughout the city. Ditto everything I said last time, make it shorter. The conditional use, actually, I'm very supportive of. Right after leaving office, one of my first jobs was working with a neighborhood storage developer to develop the regulations and making the special exception requirements for neighborhood storage. And from that time until 2018, we didn't have the problem we have now. It worked. So the conditional use is a good change, and I support most of the conditions that staff put on. I am concerned again about requiring 75% to be on the major highways. I thought we didn't want these on our major roadways. The separation, one mile and the 500 foot from the intersection, once again, same stuff I talked about last time, that's going to create winners and losers. The, using Bieber is the best. I use Bieber all the time for all my incorporation reports. It's very good statistically. And after making a statement this morning at the planning and zoning hearing that the 10-foot per resident was questionable or not questionable, it is a good number that the industry can live with. Once again, landscape screening without inspections is not a dancer. The tree, the extra tree and shrub count, it's going to be hard to get them in. The other thing is the, not allowing interior parking lot storage. If you're building a two-story facility all around a parking lot, why not allow storage inside? You can't, you're not going to, where are you going to drive all those people who want to store something outside, like something big, an RV, a boat or something like that? You're going to drive them out of the city to go store someplace else? And just as an interesting information, I don't know if this was, is valid or not, but this morning's P&amp;Z meeting, the chairman said that as a result of Ivan people needing storage, they were going as far away as Sarasota. So you may not have as much storage as you think. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 67-24, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Again, reminder that the second and final public hearing is set for October 16, 2024. Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you. Like I said earlier, being in the P&amp;Z meeting and hearing everything and having a chance to look at this, one of the items that came to my attention, that also Mr. Mazurk was just brought up, is the exterior storage or interior storage that this covers. And I do believe that if we build storage facilities that have the buildings on the outside and they have interior storage for trailers, RVs on the inside, it eliminates that unsightliness that we're trying to incorporate. So I would like to maybe talk with city management or the city attorney on how we can maybe rewrite this or relook at it, or even have discussions at the next meeting to allow interior storage for things like RVs and trailers, because we don't have any of that really in the city. You know, we took a lot of that away with the exterior storage. And also, maybe changing the sale and rental to just maybe rental. I know maybe rental trucks or rental vans with storage facilities, people do need to move their stuff into it and out of it. You know, we've got rental vans and trucks that go out of Home Depot every day, and they are in the main parking lot. So we're going to tell the storage companies they can't rent trucks, but we can tell Home Depot that they can park half of their mulch and half of their rental trucks in their parking lot, but not storage facilities. So I just want to make sure that we're being fair to one business and not pushing it on another. So those two items, I'd like to look at a little bit further before the second hearing. Thank you.
Councilmember Carr.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a similar comment related to the outside storage, you know, trailers and so forth, because, you know, we're very restrictive on where you can and can't park them on your property. And if it's fully enclosed, we're saying the definition that we're using is within the building. I think that just goes too far. Some sort of, you know, either wall enclosure or building wall enclosure to, you know, shield it, but I think we really need, I mean, we need that kind of storage in our city. I mean, how else, how else do we accomplish that? That's the question I would have. I mean, if we're not allowing that type of outside storage, you're not going to put a box trailer inside of a building, I mean, for the most part. I mean, you could, but it's probably going to cost a lot of money to do where you could do exterior storage. So I agree with Councilmember Welsh. I think some language there that would permit that would be appropriate, in my opinion. Thank you.
Councilmember Steenke.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I would chime in and agree that, you know, as FEMA has increased the finished floor elevations that we need for our homes, those of our citizens that have their boats on trailers and for people that have, you know, that type of an elevation requirement where their homes live in on a hill, basically, we've got to find some way to provide storage opportunities for them for, you know, for their boats on their trailers. And then for other, for items that they have that they can't have alongside of their homes currently. So if there was some way that we can incorporate that and encourage, you know, an investor or developer to build a project like this that would have the interior storage, but then also supply exterior storage that was visibly pleasing, or I guess a better way to put it, that wasn't visible, that would be awesome, I think. And the last is, you know, with the, with your Section C under perimeter. And the last is, you know, with your section C under perimeter landscaping and the number of trees and shrubs and whatnot. And it doesn't just apply to this, but we've been pretty good at making sure somebody doesn't get a CO unless they meet the requirements, whether it's residential or commercial. We've not been as good at going back and for those that haven't maintained the requirement and ensuring, you know, some type of compliance with that. So, maybe here isn't the place that it's done. But somehow, some way, we need to have a way of then, you know, going back and someone knows written rules before the fact. If you don't maintain this, then what happens? And for us somehow to have the capacity to go back and reevaluate their complying with this, not just at opening, but then through the course of their ownership. Those are my only two points. Thanks.
Just a quick question for me regarding some of the items my fellow colleagues brought up when it comes to, you know, a storage facility being able to rent a space for a vehicle, a box truck, trailer, boat. Is that not allowed in this?
So, currently that is, excuse me. So, currently, one of the prohibitions is that sale and rental of vehicles and trailers and things like that are prohibited on the sites. And as it comes to storage of vehicle, the storage of vehicles and boat trailers on anything but industrial sites is prohibited throughout the city. I do know that there is an allowance, I believe, for storage facilities when they are developed as part of a large ring. However, that is not, was not the intent of the code revision. It was not something that was discussed. But if that is the direction that we want to go, we can definitely look at it.
So, what you're saying is storage facilities today cannot park boots, trailers, box trucks, those sort of vehicles at the storage facility today under our current code?
It is my understanding that if they are storing boats, trailers, vehicles, things like that, that is only permissible in industrial districts and only permissible when they develop the site as part of a ring where they have a wall around the site.
Okay. And the reason I ask, I get a storage facility, actually two of them, at the same location, that I highly doubt that it's industrial use, but they have vehicles that are parked there that they rent out technically. I've seen boots there, trailers, box trucks, a variety of different type of vehicles. So, what you're saying is as long as it's a walled area, it's allowed currently?
That was my understanding. The provisions that we have about the storage of the boats, that's a relatively recent thing that we have added to the code. So, it may be a holdover that was constructed before then. But that is my understanding, the way in which the permitted with standard section reads, that it would be permitted if they did that.
Okay. So, I guess I'm like some of my colleagues. I probably need to get a little more information so I make sure that I understand correctly what's going to be allowed and what's not. I think that, you know, I don't personally have a problem. If you have a area that is completely not visible from the street on the inside, I personally don't have a problem if they park trailers or box trucks or, you know, whatever that may be because of the current codes that we have here in the city.
I understand that. My question would be how you would marry that with mixed use opportunities. Within there, we are currently already with the proposed amount being well over what is going to be allowable now. So, if we were looking for implementation of mixed use facilities and integrated mixed use, I don't necessarily know how you merge those two requirements together. I'm trying to build a ring around the property and yet then still providing on that ground floor within that ring a specific amount of non-residential permissible commercial uses. I just don't understand. We can definitely look at that and explore some different options and get a little creative with it. But it's something that, you know, we're going to have to really examine.
Okay. All right. I'd be glad to look at some more details on this particular one to make sure that I understand what we're allowing now, what we're not allowing, and then where this will end up if it's approved.
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, it's unfortunate. I know we've talked about this quite a bit and we've had a cow or two on it at least. And now we're here at one of two and saying, hey, come back next week or next time. And then we're going to, more likely than not, botch it and do it again. With that being said, I mean, the nature of both of these that we've done now is sort of turning them into a conditional use.
Correct.
Can you explain a little bit about the conditional use process and how that works?
Sure. So, for conditional use, the applicant would submit a bunch of design drawings and they go through the conditional use process. And that is a review at staff meeting the conditional use requirements to make sure that they are meeting the specific requirements as outlined within the conditional use section. So, for instance, we would check to make sure they're meeting buffering requirements, they are meeting area requirements, locational requirements. There are also some things that are left open at the conditional use end, such as working out if they're adjacent to residential for some of these access hours or working out, as the way the code is written, proposed to be written, working out specific landscaping elements that maybe necessarily aren't specified, but that are open. So, it's part of the process for getting a permit. And then would also go through our site conditional processes as well for review.
So, the point I guess I'm trying to make is it's also an opportunity for us to look at these, some of these one-off instances that are brought forth on these individual sites on a case-by-case basis and evaluate them and make modifications at that point in time.
Correct.
So, we do have an opportunity to address some of these concerns on a site-specific basis.
Correct. It's very hard to write a code that is going to be specific for every instance. There's many unique cases that are popping up all over the city, all over every jurisdiction. You cannot write code for it. Your code would be thousands and hundreds of thousands and millions of pages long if you tried.
Correct. And that's the point, I guess, I'm trying to make here is we can sit up here and pick apart almost anything that we do as far as exacting it all the way to, you know, what if? So, part of the, I want to make sure everyone understands that the fluidity of the conditional use is that we have an opportunity to address them on a site-specific basis for these scenarios that are not necessarily contemplated by the code and possibly allow for some, or ameliorate any of those concerns at that time. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh.
Yeah. And to touch base on that, yes, conditional use is what we're going for here. And I think that's a great idea. But to put these other restrictions on it now is what I was trying to avoid. Like, let's remove some of these that no parking or no rentals. We can look at them as a case base and look at the design with the conditional use. So, that's why I was trying to make sure that before this got put in, we had the opportunity to change it. So, it wasn't like we're tying ourselves into only this. And then conditional use on top of that. So, I was just trying to alleviate some of the excess, what I feel is excess restrictions on it so that it can be more conditional to site-specific things. Thank you.
Okay. Let's just say, manager, you get some good input?
Yes. We will develop some diagrams and illustrations. And we will get some other examples of some enclosed outdoor RV and boat storage to show to you all in the one-on-ones and make sure we understand exactly what you're discussing.
Yeah, just wanted to also, I know we have a committee of the whole meeting next week. And I think there's only four items on that particular agenda. There's only four items on that particular agenda. So, I don't know if staff, if that gives staff enough time, a week. But I think we do have that opportunity to maybe come back as a collective council and have a discussion on whatever modifications.
I'm a little bit concerned that if we do go to a committee of the whole, we're going to end up in a position where we will have to restart the process over for a first reading. If that is the will of the council, then I understand. But there is a very good possibility that if we go to a committee of the whole, we will be forced to come back for a first reading. And that would not be enough time to have that first reading on the 16th. I do not believe, which means that the first reading would arguably be the 30th. And then the second reading wouldn't happen until after the new council is appointed. Food for thought. I just want everyone to know that. But that could potentially be the likely outcome of that. So, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Councilmember Welsh, was your light on from before?
It was, but now I've got another question for the city attorney. If we wanted to modify, let's just say, the two changes I brought up, that could be done at the second reading and it would not halt the process?
That is correct. That will not run afoul of us moving forward and having the second and final hearing on the 16th.
Just removing those two things that I spoke about can be done without?
Or a slight modification to accomplish the will of the council, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to?
Yeah. So far, we're good to go. And I mentioned that to the city manager, if we do go to a committee of the whole, we run the risk of it.
No, I've got some pretty good faith that with our one-on-ones, we can discuss with both of you. And then we can have this discussion at the second reading and still get this accomplished in time. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess what my concern is just the opposite. I want to make sure that we, as a collective council, has an opportunity to have the discussion. To me, one-on-one meetings, that really doesn't mean anything to me because I want to hear what my colleagues have to say and make sure they have the time for input like today. For instance, some of this I didn't even think of. And as a part of the discussion today, it was brought to light. One-on-one meeting, you don't get that. So, I'd rather take the time, get it done right, make sure that we, eight of us are comfortable moving forward. Because if not, like you said, starting over, if everybody's a no, if a majority is a no vote on what, two weeks from now, you're starting over anyway. So, that's kind of how I look at it. Councilmember Hayden.
Yeah, I think when we initially had this discussion about putting the pause of the moratorium on, it was about where these facilities would be located. And we really haven't talked much about that except in that 500-foot circle. It sounds like we're still giving up frontage on our major roads for storage facilities. And I thought the whole purpose of this exercise or this pause was to preserve that commercial space. It's great that we find a place to put boats and cars, but it sounds to me like we still have the issue to address, which is what started all of this, was preserving our commercial space on major roads. I don't know that this takes care of that except on intersections and intersections. So, as we continue this discussion in a couple of weeks, and we've got these premium parcels out there that could be of use as prime commercial space and we're building a storage unit there outside of this circle. How are we addressing that moving forward? Are we going to allow it? You know, I know there's conditional uses in place and how we address those is great. But I think we're not discussing what we put the moratorium in place for in the first place was to preserve our commercial land. And it's in these PowerPoints as well. So, I don't know. It seems to me like, you know, we're going to have a second public hearing in a couple of weeks. And I don't know how much more we've accomplished from when all this started, when the moratorium was put in place. Maybe I'm missing something. But kind of like a response on, Mr. Mazzurkowitz had mentioned it earlier as well, on these premier commercial areas on our major roads. And are we going to see storage facilities then popping up there, which we were trying to avoid in the first place?
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, I see your light on. Or was that from before? Okay, good.
I'm going to add that comment to what I'm hearing tonight. So, I had three, but I'll add that as a fourth. So, what I'm hearing is at least one council member who would like to allow a rental business out of a storage facility. I hear a couple of council members who would like to allow outdoor storage inside a wrapped facility. And I had two council members that had some concerns about the buffering at the end of a canal, whether it be vegetative or fence. To me, all of those, unless there's a consensus, I'm not seeing. I'm hearing individual input from council. But I think that we can clarify the fence and the buffer. But if it's the will of council to allow rentals out of storage units or to change, to add a totally different type of storage facility related to this one, we can address that type of facility as a whole section, right? So, we can still do this and then say, okay, what do we want to do with this other animal? Presumably, RV and boat storage, not mini storage or just open. So, from where I was at, I didn't see that the council as a whole had any issues. If you think collectively that, or you all, some of you who haven't spoke, you have interest, it would be good for me to know. Because then I would, if there is four of you that want to address all three of these things, then yeah, then the right thing to do is to suspend this process now and go back to a cow. But what I heard were some individual comments, not the collective body. And I feel comfortable that we can address some of those issues with the individual council members that brought those up.
Thank you. Councilmember Long.
Anthony, I know it was a lot, but just some of the things that the city manager just kind of outlined when he talked about the individual concerns, I guess, the storage, the rentals. Can those things all be allowed under the conditional use request?
If we modify, as I said, the requirements for reviewing conditional use are based off of the requirements that we have specified in our land development code under our conditional use section. So, if we were to put in specific requirements prohibiting them, then they are prohibited when it goes through the conditional use review process. However, if we don't address it, then it goes down to the use table and review. Or if we did put in exceptions, then it would be permissible. So, all of that would be allowable or permissible or prohibited. It would just have to be spelled out specifically within our conditional use section.
So, as it's currently written, if we move forward, would someone be able to have relief on a site-specific basis on a conditional use request for some of those concerns that were written?
For a few of them, yes. For most of them, no.
So, then why don't we go down the list on those particular things if we can now? So, we're not wasting any more time on cows and second hearings? And if there's a majority of people that care enough about allowing people to do rentals, car rentals at a site, then full stop, we have to start over, it sounds like? And if not, then we continue forward? That'd be my suggestion as far as low-hanging fruit. And I would start with that one and work our way down. Because otherwise, we're just spinning tires here and wasting time. If we're going to have to start over, I would suggest that we do that now.
Well, I think some of the, well, Councilmember Steinkie, your light's on. Let me let you talk.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to make sure that I wasn't misunderstood in my comments as it related to rental. I would certainly not advocate for the units to be used for the purpose of running a rental business. I was thinking that what we were talking about was the entire facility may want to have the ability to rent a truck or a trailer for those people that are moving goods from their house to their storage unit and whatnot. There are many storage facilities that have that amenity, if you will, as one of the offerings to people that rent storage units there is they have some capacity for them to get things to and from their place. I was not talking about the ability to run a rental business out of a unit. So, I would not be in favor of that. I would be in favor of that storage facility being able to offer that as an amenity to their customer that's renting a unit from them to help them facilitate the use of their unit. So, I was not advocating for running rental businesses out of a storage unit.
All right. Councilmember Shepard.
I would like to learn more about this topic. Just off what I hear right now, we have a crisis in our city when it comes to people that have small business boats, trailers and things like that, finding a place where they can put them.
trailers, and things like that, finding a place where they can put them that is acceptable in our community. And we don't want them having them at their homes. And I would, I was under the impression that storage facilities that had a wall around them and they have spaces within their facility where they can fit a couple boats or work trucks or things like that. Off the cuff, I don't have a problem with that unless staff can educate me on reasons why that's a negative for our city. But I would like to get educated more on that, because we are lacking places for citizens to put their commercial trailers and vehicles and boats. And I think it's our responsibility to help them find and create locations for them to keep them so they can be in compliance. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh?
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing, that, you know, we don't allow a ladder rack on a van in a person's yard. So, my electrician has ladder rack on his van. And if he's got to go park his van in Fort Myers, because that's the only place that allows him to store his van so that he can park his regular car at his house, now I'm looking at an hour and a half to two hours from a neighborhood electrician to come fix a problem that I have. So, I think a lot of these storage facilities and storage units, we should allow commercial vehicles to park there within certain confines, because it just, it keeps the locals local. It keeps us from having to drive over the bridge to just do the basic services and necessities that we have. Thank you.
So, to get back to maybe Councilmember Long's suggestion, we have, and maybe Councilmember... Councilmember Welsh, since you brought it up as far as rentals, are you talking about something similar to the description that Councilmember Stanky had provided? Or are you talking, you know, like I know U-Haul, you can go over on Santa Barbara Boulevard, and there's a convenience store there that rents U-Haul trucks. Is that the type of business are you talking there? Or are you talking about similar to what Councilmember Stanky said? Hey, I want to rent this unit. I need to rent a truck for the day. You go pick your furniture up, you put it in your storage bin, and then you give it back. So, exactly what type of business are you...
I kind of agree with Councilmember Stanky. If the actual rental facility offers it, yes, but not an additional business that offers it, like not a secondary business. So, if it's self-spaced storage and they offer a truck that's available for rent, I think they should be able to do that in their own facility. But if I, you know, Welsh Rentals, want to rent a unit from self-spaced storage, I should not be able to operate my business out of that. Does that make sense? Thank you.
So, we got the rental of trucks, we have vehicles or trailers or boots, RVs, or whatever the case may be, that could be parked on the interior of a structure that's buffered in some fashion, whether it's the building itself that's buffering, so you can't see it from the roadway, or, you know, a solid fence. Unfortunately, a solid fence, you're not going to buffer that, I don't think, if it's a six-foot fence. So, I think it would be, it would have to be buffered by the building, so it's not visible. So, are those the two items that we brought up? Any, Mr. City Manager, other than those two items, is there anything else? The rental of trucks for that particular storage facility and on-site parking of vehicles, trailers, RVs, that sort of stuff that's on the inside? Was anything else brought up?
Did you have the buffers?
And then the buffers.
I think, just to clarify what, so it seems like the rental business is being honed and narrowed. Thank you, Councilmember Stanky and Councilmember Welsh. So, it sounds like you're talking more about a service that the principal business is offering to its tenant, similar to selling boxes or a lock. And so, it sounds like you're wanting to make sure that, within the code that we have, the business, the principal business of the unit, the storage, will have the ability to rent a vehicle for the purpose of transporting those goods. And I, so that, if that question could be answered, and it's within the building or stored some way that it, you know, is not just open storage, that's the question that I was going to ask, you know, staff. The way we have it written currently, if that's allowed as a service of the principal business, are we covered? I don't have that right now, but that's what I was saying. I think some of these I can ask. What if, if there, so if there was other things, like allowing Penske to use the parking as a commercial or, you know, U-Haul to rent their commercial parking, that's a whole different, that's why I was asking. So, the clarification was very helpful.
So, do you need any further direction from council collectively to have staff move in that direction?
I think, I saw a lot of head shaking that it was an ancillary service of the principal business. Was anybody considering what we were thinking, or I was thinking, which was allowing, okay? So, everybody was thinking ancillary service?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, now, that took care of that one. So, let's take care of the parking of vehicles, trailers, cargo trailers, you know, box trucks, and those type of vehicles on the inner perimeter of a building that is not visible from the roadway. I think it's what we were all talking about.
So, we could write up a subsection that specifically addresses that, to allow for that. It could not be an issue. We would just have to work out some site parameters, wall parameters, and a couple of other things, but that is doable.
Right. And there may even be some parking specificity where you're only allowed so many vehicles at a particular site of a certain size. I'll leave that up to staff, but...
And we have a couple of good examples of that. One recently built off a diplomat. And there's been one for a while off a Pondela, where you drive by, it looks like a commercial building. You don't even know it's storage inside it.
Okay. All right. Is everyone okay with that one? All right. And then the last thing is the buffering. I will say, I was a little confused on the buffering. So, let's try to clarify it first. So, I think we all have the same understanding. I think there was an analogy of a canal. You come back 20 feet off of the seawall, and you put some type of buffering. And I think you gave a couple of different scenarios.
Correct.
Now, is that planning that you were talking about, you said in front of, so is that on the canal side?
Correct.
Okay.
And just for reference, that is for car washes. I don't know if that same condition would apply for this, because we do not have that similar buffering requirement against canals.
All right. So, it looks like it's just those two items then. Is that correct, council? That's, if we can address those two items. I know Councilmember Hayden still had some concern with the major thoroughfares, but I guess that's something we can address, because I think it's only, he was the only one that brought that up. But that is, does anyone else have that concern that Councilmember Hayden had brought up?
Mayor, I wanted to make sure I know the two that you're talking about. The two is the buffering and the flat deck storage?
That, no, what I was talking about, the first two were the rental of trucks and the parking of vehicles there.
Right.
I think we're good there.
Yes.
All right. Now, the buffering, I think, came up in the previous conversation.
Correct.
I mixed the two together.
Unless there were concerns about buffering as a preference to this.
Right, but...
That's why I need to see some illustrations of what we're talking about.
That's fine. But I think, now that we've had this dialogue and this discussion, and it's went a little further, I think we could probably fine-tune what we've gotten and implement some of those in the ordinance. And we should be able to have that second hearing in two weeks.
So, I just want to make sure that a lot of these things are prohibited in the existing draft. It almost sounds as if we have the ability to not outright prohibit them, but allow it to be conducted by way of the review of the conditional use. It sounds like all of you would be satisfied, if I, and I see some, right? So, a lot of these things are outright prohibitions as they exist right now. If I remove the outright prohibition and make it as a part of the analysis of the conditional use approval for the site-specific application, it appears that this will address at least a majority of your concerns. All right, got it.
All right. Councilmember Long, I see your light on.
I guess I'll leave that alone for now. Thank you.
All right. All right. I think no other lights on, so I think we got through that one. Introductions next, correct?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Move on to item 10C, introductions. Ordinance 65-24, Madam City Clerk, please read title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 65-24, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, amending the city of Cape Coral, Florida comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from commercial slash professional to single-family residential land use for property described as lots three and four, block 3960, unit 54, Cape Coral subdivision. Property located at 107 Southwest 24th Place, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be October 16th, 2024.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 68-24. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing for transmittal date.
Ordinance 68-24, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan of the city of Cape Coral, Florida by amending policy 1.15 of the future land use element by creating the mixed-use 10 future land use map classification, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing for transmittal will be October 16th, 2024.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 71-24. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 71-24, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, authorizing the issuance of commercial paper debt obligations pursuant to the city's commercial paper program. The outstanding aggregate principal amount of which commercial debt obligations authorized hereby may not exceed $25 million at any one time in order to finance costs of various parks and other facilities within the city as described herein, providing for the use of a direct pay letter of credit from Bank of America NA to pay the principal and purchase price of redemption premium, if any, and interest on the commercial paper debt obligations, providing for a covenant to budget and appropriate legally available non-adverbal revenues to pay the principal and purchase price of redemption premium, if any, and interest on the commercial paper debt obligations, and to satisfy the city's obligations under said letter of credit, providing for the rights of the holders of the commercial paper debt obligations and providing an effective date. The public hearing will be October 16th, 2024.
Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 72-24. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 72-24, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, amending ordinance number 65-23, which established the Victory Park Community Development District by modifying the external boundaries of the district through expansion, resulting in an expansion of the district by 121.97 plus or minus acres from 137.39 plus or minus acres to 259.36 plus or minus acres, and providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be October 16th, 2024.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 74-24. Madam City Clerk, please read title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 74-24, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a second amended master lease agreement for all charter schools and facilities with the Cape Coral Charter School Authority for the lease of property owned by the city of Cape Coral at 3519 Oasis Boulevard, 3519B Oasis Boulevard, 3507 Oasis Boulevard, 3415 Oasis Boulevard, and 2817 Southwest Third Lane. A copy of the second amended lease agreement is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be October 16th, 2024.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 76-24. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 76-24, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, amending the city of Cape Coral, Florida Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article 10, towing and immobilization of vehicles or vessels parked on private property, relating to the modification of certain definitions and the maximum rate schedule, implementing a fuel surcharge schedule, amending Article 11, law enforcement requested towing of vehicles or vessels, relating to the modification of certain definitions and the maximum rate schedule, implementing a fuel surcharge schedule, providing for codification and resolution of conflicting laws, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be October 16th, 2024.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none. Item 11 is reports. Councilmember Hayden, report.
No report.
Councilmember Long?
No report.
Councilmember Shepard?
Yes, the only thing I would like to say is, as a community, two years ago, we were hit by a hurricane, and we know what it's like to go through that and the devastation and the damage and the rebuilding that a lot of our families had to go through. We got a lot of help from outside our community, from organizations and workers from all over the state and even other states that came and helped us when we were in a time of need. What I wanted to ask our citizens that are watching is, there was a lot of devastation from this hurricane that just went by, from Florida all the way up to Virginia. I myself seen photos of North Carolina, where entire towns were literally wiped clean, where there is literally nothing left. And I just want to ask people, if you have the ability, we have nonprofits, churches, and organizations within our city that are bringing supplies, and to please reach out and help. These people need our help. They were there for us, and we need to be there for them. So, just, that's all I would like to say about that. But they, the devastation, the pictures I saw are just unbelievable. I mean, whole town's gone. And unfortunately, they never had an impact like that. And I don't even think a lot of the people got a warning. They literally had surges of over 20 feet. So, keep them in your prayers as well. Thank you.
Councilmembers, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I had the privilege of attending the mayor's scholarship ball on the 21st. It was extremely well-attended and a tremendous fundraiser to provide scholarships for our youth and future generations and residents and leadership of our community. So, that was an awesome event. Thank you for those that are listening or that are here that participated in that as well. I took the opportunity to go to the Cape Coral Police Department National Night Out on the first. It was awesome seeing our finest out there, spending time with the kids, their parents, playing games with them, if you will, you know, humanizing our law enforcement department so that our residents would feel like they were more, that everyone's on the same team. And so, that was really awesome to see, and my thanks go out to all of our officers and the staff that was involved, and then a number of volunteers and sponsors that were, you know, donating their time, their equipment, food and drinks. It was really an awesome time out there at Cultural Park. And then, just today, I had the opportunity to attend the Chamber of Southwest Florida luncheon where Lee Health provided an update on what was happening there that will affect Cape Coral Hospital in switching... that will affect Cape Coral Hospital in switching from a public nonprofit to a private nonprofit. They call it a community-focused private nonprofit. And the reasons why that they're looking at that change. It's gone through their leadership at Lee Health and it'll be formalized by them on Monday and then on Tuesday by the Lee County Board of County Commissioners. So I was happy to be able to attend that event and become more educated on the hows and the whys that that was happening. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Welsh?
No report.
Councilmember Carr?
No report.
Councilmember Cosda?
Mine's pretty short. On September 19th through the 21st, I attended the board of directors meeting for the Florida League of Cities. And also during that time, I attended the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust Board Meeting as well. Also on 9/21, I attended the mayor's scholarship ball. Again, another great event, raises money to help provide scholarships for the kids of our community. So thank you for everyone that participated in that event as well. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. Just so that you are aware, this morning, the administrative law judge did hear petitioner's motion to strike the city of Cape Coral's renewed motions for sanctions based upon their frivolous filings and how they conducted themselves during the administrative proceedings regarding the Chiquita Lock, salt-pretended Chiquita Lock. The administrative judge did hear the legal arguments in regards to this matter, did not rule on it. But I will notify you when and if there is in fact an order on that and what the final ruling is. But we continue to pursue our entitlement to attorney's fees against the petitioners based upon their conduct during the administrative hearing, trying to stop the issuance of the environmental resource permit from FDEP. Secondarily, I know a lot of you have expressed to me some concerns regarding the individual who is submitting documents to you alleging or trying to substantiate the legalities of them in terms of J.C. Park and the removal of the Australian pines. I want to make sure that the public is well aware. The Australian pines are legal under Florida law. It is a criminal offense to have them. Secondarily, what this individual is filing is legally defective. They are commingling different concepts, and we will be addressing that before the court, when and if the court actually finds any legal merits of this whatsoever. But in terms of the public to be aware, what has been filed, what has been submitted to the council is just fundamentally wrong pursuant to Florida law and is not supported by any legal precedence or process. So I want that to be publicly known. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to announce that the city of Cape Coral will be temporarily closing the, will be temporarily closing the Chiquita Lock to all boat traffic for a required FEMA inspection beginning on October 20th, 2024. The lock will remain closed for approximately five days and is expected to reopen on October 25th, barring any unforeseen circumstances with that inspection. So again, October 20th through October 25th. Additionally, there is, the city of Cape Coral will be hosting a water conservation town hall. This is Monday, October 7th, from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m., located here in the city council chambers. And the topics that will be covered will be soil sensors and smart controllers, how to qualify for the $500 rebate, irrigation schedules and variances for smart sensors, the current irrigation schedule, water quality, and also how to prepare your properties for the dry season. So this is an effort to continue to get education out to our residents and businesses regarding water conservation. It is a town hall Monday, October 7th, from 5:30 to 6:30 here in council chambers. And then lastly, the city of Cape Coral launched a new utility customer portal. This provides a range of convenient features allowing customers to access their account, utility account 24/7, view, print, and pay utility bills, set up auto-pay options, and submit account information updates. That can be accessed through the city's website, and that is live now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Time and place of future meeting. We have a special meeting in the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for today, Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024. That meeting will start at 6:40. I figure we take about a 15-minute break here in council chambers. It's our rescheduled second and final budget hearing. And also, we have a committee of the whole scheduled for Wednesday, October 9th, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. here in council chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.